So I will go ahead and introduce our panelists just by name and title. And then we will give each panelist, oh, about two minutes just to explain how it is that they came to be a speaker on this topic and what their role is today. Then we certainly would like to have questions from the public, but I'll kind of get that started and we'll do sort of a round robin. We would like to hear from people that this issue affects. And so we're going to ask, you know, several times, does anybody have a question? Would anybody like to come forward and speak? And this seat there is for that, the microphone. And we would love to hear your story because of course that those personal stories are really the most compelling, you know, part of the whole issue. So we'll begin at the very end there with Dr. Paul McPherson from the Idaho Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Thank you for being here, doctor.
Thank you.
Janet Heimlich is an author and advocate for this cause. She has a book, Breaking Their Will: Shedding Light on Religious Child Maltreatment. And she is here from Austin, Texas. Next is Erwin Sonnenberg, and he's the recently retired Ada County Coroner. Emily Walton is a very strong advocate for this issue, and you probably also recognize her as a trustee for the College of Western Idaho. And then the Reverend Dr. Andrew Kukla is from First Presbyterian Church of Boise. So thank you all so much for being here. And we'll just start at the end with Reverend Kukla. Why don't you set us up for why you're a part of this panel? What your thoughts are?
I think I'm a part of this panel because I happened to be standing next to Judy when she realized her first speaker was not available. So that's the real truth. I have been in Idaho for three and a half years. I'm the pastor at First Presbyterian Church, so it was only a block walk for me. So that was the other second best reason to ask me to do it. I think it's a pertinent issue for me. My father was raised Catholic, but my mother was raised Christian Scientist. So I had, they, we, I joke that I ended up Presbyterian by mathematical equation. But in advance of speaking here tonight, I reached out to some of my family who I know and love that are Christian Scientists and would, had, didn't go to doctors as children and whatnot to kind of get a feel for their, their take on this and what that meant for them. And how do we respect that but also protect children?
Right, so you have a little theological and personal input on it.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Emily, can you keep it to two minutes? We want to hear a lot of your story, but first, maybe you can update us on what's going on in the legislature, how we got to this point?
Yeah, so I know a lot about this issue because I have a sister who was denied medical care. I always try to talk about this without crying, but it's impossible, so just gonna have to roll with it. And she didn't get a seat, and she's gonna tell her story, but essentially when she was 18, went to the doctor, found out she had a hole in her heart that had damaged her lungs. And she lives with a severe disability now and needs a lung transplant. And so I've been taking care of her for almost three years. It's been very difficult, and it didn't have to happen. That's really what it comes down to. She doesn't have to be in this situation now. And then I've also been following with, of course, with Jan's help, and she'll talk about this too, you know, the law in Idaho and what really led to this, to this being allowed to happen and why, when I called for help to like the Department of Health and Welfare, there wasn't a lot that they thought that they could do. And so, you know, there's a law that protects parents if they don't want to take their child to the doctor at all. And so there's been a workforce in place that's been working on it, I should say, a task force. And there's other people who can talk more about what that task force has done. And then just today, Governor Otter issued a letter asking the Speaker and the pro temp in the Senate to do a legislative work group. So I have opinions about what that means, but that's really up to date what's happened. And then one of the Senate legislators has been working on a bill to see if we can get that, a hearing on that. So I think that was under two minutes.
You did good. All right, former Coroner Erwin Sonnenberg.
Two minutes, huh?
I'm not timing.
Well, being the Coroner, I've been involved, you know, for over 36 years in dealing with the, with deaths. So I'm seeing the, I guess you could say the downside as far as what my office would see. And it's very difficult working with children, deaths, and no matter how they happen to occur. I am a strong person of faith. I've had several cousins, and my brother were all ministers. It's been a big topic we have talked about. And I'm, I'm a strong advocate for religious freedom, but I just see things in my office that have happened that is, it's tough when you see something happen that, oh, you could say, two families living in houses next to them, one of them's prosecuted and one of them's not. And I, I guess, I'm the one with all the stories, but to cut it short, I think, I think we need to change the law so that the prosecutors can look at it and be making a decision from their basis of if they think faith healing is a part of it that should not be prosecuted or it should be. And with the law, it binds their hands. And so I think it should be removed. That's kind of my political statement without giving my stories right now.
All right. Janet Heimlich, visiting us from Austin, has been a staunch advocate in this regard for a long time. Tell us a little about your background and what you're doing here in Idaho.
Sure, and thank you for having me. I love this town, and the people have been fantastic. So, and I really appreciate just this opportunity to have folks talking about this issue. I came at this as a journalist. In 2008, I just started looking into it because I read a story. It was an above-fold story in the New York Times front page. An 11-year-old girl in Wisconsin named Kara Newman had died from diabetes. Her parents didn't belong to a big church. They were, they just ran their own small neighborhood church out of their coffee shop. But they were firm believers in faith healing. And even though her father was a former police officer, they, they did not, had not taken her to a doctor since she was three, so she was never diagnosed. When she started showing signs of going into diabetic coma and so forth, they, they still did not provide her any medical care. When, when the EMTs came in, her father was performing CPR on her in a desperate effort to save her life. I was really kind of devastated by that story. And since then, I've just, I would say, made it my career, if you will, to research all forms of what I call religious child maltreatment. And that led to me writing the book and then starting a nonprofit called The Child Friendly Faith Project. And I can talk a little later just about what we've learned about how other states who have repealed their religious exemptions, what's happened there, and, but I'll get into that later.
Okay. And then finally, we have Dr. Paul McPherson.
Yes.
From the Idaho Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Yes, thank you. So I'm a pediatrician here in Boise. And the reason I'm a pediatrician is during medical school, I found out it was much more fun to take care of children than it was to take care of adults. No offense to any adults here in the auditorium. One of the things I like, I like about taking care of children is that you can get down, talk to them about their favorite TV show or about their favorite cartoon. So as professional development, about 30 minutes each week, I watch either the Disney Channel or Bugs Bunny Road Runner cartoons. And I like taking care of children, one at a time in my office, helping them feel better. I like reassuring parents that your child's going to be okay. But another hat that I wear as a pediatrician goes beyond the clinic office. It goes to public health. And when there is a public health issue that can affect the lives or health of children, I want to be involved. And as I've been practicing here in Boise, I began to learn a little bit about the topic of what we're discussing here tonight and how it can positively and negatively affect the health of a child. So I'm grateful to be here to be part of this discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. So we just want to set a few ground rules when, when we open it up because you are invited to ask the panel questions from their perspective. We want to make sure to keep it as positive civil discourse as we can. We don't want to turn it into a religious bashing situation, but maybe information finding and help you clarify why people feel the way they do or, you know, what form their opinion. So let's keep it on the up and up because I will ask you to stop if it, you know, turns into something that we feel isn't productive. We want this to be most productive. So why don't we start with the piece of news today that the Governor announcing that he wants a legislative working group to study this issue? Do you see it as positive? And maybe Emily, you can start with this because you're so familiar with the legislative process. Is it a stall? Does it take time? Who's gonna be on that board looking at that? What happens next?
You know, I think overall, looking at the Governor's letter, I'm, I'm happy to see that he's concerned about this issue, and I'm happy to see that he, you know, is looking at the, the work that the Child Fatality Review Team did. I do think, though, there's already been an extensive amount of work done on it, right? We have a 60-page report. We have some really strong findings. And as Erwin can speak to, we already know that we have much more than just these two deaths in this report, right? And we know, I know of several children, like, young people like my sister, who have been permanently disabled from this. And so my opinion is that this is great, but we just need to have a hearing and have people come out and talk about it. So that's my, that's my opinion. I'm still glad that he wrote the letter, though.
All right, and just knowing, this may be a question you can't answer, but having it happen this early in the legislative session, will, will something be brought to bear soon or this is just informational?
Yeah, so this, this asks our, our Senate and our House leaders to step up and to form a legislative work group. I, I do think it's, it's obviously a very sensitive issue, and I understand that. So I do think, you know, this does need more input than just, you know, than just people coming forward. We need to look at it carefully to make sure we're not infringing on people's beliefs.
What about the rest of you? See it as a, as a good movement forward? And will you be willing to participate? Erwin?
Well, don't know if I'll answer this, how you're looking, but Idaho's the last state to have faith healing really kind of listed the way it is in all 50 states. We're the last one. Oregon went through a lot of battles. There've been a lot of discussion groups across the country. It's good to form a, another group to look at it, but I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time looking at that group. There's a lot of information out there already from what Oregon went through, and we have dealt with this for several years. This is an issue that I have dealt with for 36 years in one way or another, because every time these issues come up, we would go to the prosecutor. So I'm glad it's coming to a head, but if we don't, we need to go forward with the legislation we have and have the discussions take place with the legislature and get them the information that's taking place in other states. But being the last state with the law, how ours is written, I think needs to be changed.
You know, and maybe Janet, you could, you've seen this process in several states? Is that correct? You've seen states repeal the religious or adjust the religious exemption? What's ahead for us here? You know, it's the, you know, child protection versus religious freedom. It's a, it's a tough issue.
I think a little history is needed here. There is no other form of maltreatment that is protected by law in this way. We track cases of abuse and neglect that are ideologically inspired or in some way religiously motivated. And we, we see this happen in all different kinds of groups, all, all forms of abuse and neglect, you know, physical abuse, even sexual abuse. And, you know, you can have people that neglect their children's education for religious reasons. The, the reason why this particular exemption exists is because back in the 1970s, some high-ranking gentlemen who were in the Nixon administration, who happened to be Christian Scientists, felt that they, they wanted all states to have this kind of protection. And so it was offered as a requirement for federal funding, and every state basically had to opt in in order to get the federal funding. After that, it was very difficult to get those repealed. However, most states have either completely repealed or repealed to some degree. There are only six to nine states, depending on how you look at it, that allow this exemption for manslaughter. And so that's why we're seeing cases of child deaths in Idaho, because there is that protection. The other side of it is that it's hard to even know what's going on out there. We know usually about the deaths because we, there would be a coroner's report, although I did hear for a time Canyon County was, was not doing autopsies. But I think it's really important to stress, and I'm glad that Mariah is here to maybe even talk about this a bit. You know, the deaths are those that really rise to the top, that are very high-profile and we hear about. We do not hear about the children who, on a day-to-day basis, are denied medical care for something like a, you know, a throbbing headache that goes on for days, an infection that takes them out of school for a year. I happen to know a woman who's missing a leg because being raised in Christian Science and not being treated for an infection in her knee which could have been cured in a week, you know, she now, she now is missing her leg. So I just think it's important not to overlook the, the suffering that might be going on in addition to those that don't make it.
Maybe this would be a good time for you to tell a little more about your personal family story, Emily, and maybe introduce your sister, who is one of the sufferers living with the consequences of lack of medical care.
Yeah, so I think, you know, one thing I've seen discussed in this whole issue over the last couple of years is, you know, we don't want to pick on one particular religion, right? And, and I agree with that. And, you know, my family was not members of this particular sect that's out, you know, out in Canyon County. We lived in Southern Idaho, and my parents just, you know, I think were more fundamentalist than some people in the area and decided that we weren't gonna go to doctors. And so, you know, there's 10 kids in our family. We were, most of us were very fortunate to get through with everything intact, and we were okay. But Mariah, she was the second to the youngest, and, and she, you know, has suffered greatly for, for not being able to go to the doctor. And, you know, I think as the oldest sister, I watched her, she was much smaller, she was blue, often she couldn't, she wasn't doing well, she wasn't growing. And even though, you know, when I was younger, I asked my parents to take her to the doctor, and we could see that something was wrong, you know, they didn't want to. And I, in some ways, I regret not just picking her up and taking her to the ER and just insisting that someone do something. And in fact, if anyone out there is listening and, and has a family situation like that, I would actually encourage you to just do that and let the chips fall where they may because someone's life isn't worth it. So, and now I've made her cry, I'm sorry. So Mariah actually wrote out her testimony. Do you wanna, do you wanna come up and give it now? Okay. And we're calling it a testimony because she's, we're really, she's prepared at some point to talk in front of the legislature about it, but it's really her story. So is that an okay time for that, Claudia? Sounds like it. Okay, thanks.
Hi. My name is Mariah Walton. I am the ninth of 10 children. When I turned 18, I made a phone call to the doctors and I, I realized something was wrong with me because the day before, I had been walking to the library and I had had a very serious asthma attack, so we'd been calling it for years. And when I went in to go see my mom, she said I was fine and I shouldn't worry about it. And then I went to the bathroom and I collapsed and I could not get up by myself. I was so weak. And she came in and she pulled me up and she said, "Don't talk about it, you're fine." And so my parents had been divorced, and my dad had come to see me. And, you know, my mom wasn't there, and I thought the best time to get, you know, my dad to cooperate with this was before my mom got home from work. And I had to blackmail him into doing it because I was like, you know, if you don't do it, I'm gonna call the cops. And so we went to the doctor, and I go to the waiting room, and I'm told to wait. And then the doctor comes out immediately and she sees me and she's like, you know, "It's your turn." And I went in, and she started asking me a lot of weird questions that I didn't understand. And she used references I didn't know any of them meant. And then when she started asking me the questions, she said, you know, "Have you had like any serious breathing issues, fatiguedness?" And I said yes to many of those questions. And then when I mentioned blue fingers and blue around the mouth, she freaked out. And she said, "I'll be right back." And she had to go make a phone call, I kind of freaked. And then she came in and she told me I had this disease, and I had no idea what it was. I was very scared going there. On the way back, I opened crying because I was so scared about what my parents were going to say to me, because my parents, my whole life, had threatened me if I were to go, I was saying, "Carol, what would happen to me?" The disease that I had was called pulmonary hypertension. It's very rare these days. There is not many treatments for it except high blood pressure medication and transplant The disease consists of fatiguedness, hard breathing, blue lips, blue fingertips. You just, if you don't get help right away, you have very shallow breathing, you can't walk very far, you're very exhausted by the end of the day, you have bad throbbing headaches. So when I got back to my parents, my mom didn't even want to look at me. She said, "Don't talk about it, I don't want to hear about it." And then my sister Rachel volunteered to take me in because she was like, you know, "We can't be afraid of your parents anymore, we need to get you help." And so I went in, we started doing tests, and they found, and they said, you know, "If you don't get help, you have less than five years to live." And so I started getting treatments. And then last summer, I ended up on full life support because of an issue I was having with my hormones. And then when I got out of the hospital, they were like, you know, "You're gonna need a lung transplant if you want to survive." And being on full life support, I'm telling you, is not fun. I had things down my throat. I had to be restrained sometimes because I would try to get the tube out of my throat, literally, because I was so tired and so thirsty sometimes. It was cold, I heard everywhere because they had, they had needles up in my arm, all seven, both arms, and they had one in my foot, and I couldn't move. And I tried to talk to people, no understood me. And then finally, when the doctor came in, he told me what was wrong and what would need to be done because I was severely more sick than we were initially in the beginning. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mariah.
You're a brave girl. All, all your family and your siblings are very brave, and thank you so much. I could just hear your struggle for breath, but it was very important for you to share your story as a survivor of this, so thank you.
Doctor, I know that you have probably been familiar with a few cases like this. Maybe you can add some perspective to this, being in the middle of wanting so desperately to help and provide medical intervention. And what's your history with this? Have you, have you been stopped from helping a child?
Well, I first want to say thank you for sharing your personal story. You're very articulate. You're very well-posed. And thank you so much for explaining to us how difficult it's been for you. As you were telling us your medical condition, my thoughts were torn. One part of me was thinking about what was going on with your heart and lungs as I learned from my medical training. The other part was that compassion and empathy side that was coming out. And what I can say is from cases that I've read, there are a number of children who have experienced what she has but have not survived long enough to tell us. Children who have died from diabetes that was untreated. Many of the same symptoms that you've experienced, they did, and much more severely. And they did not get medical help. Children who have died from stomach flus or food poisoning, and their bodies were deteriorating slowly, and they would lay there, eventually not move, slip into a coma, and then die. If they could speak, they would speak very similar to what you did. So thank you for making a voice for all of them. The organization I represent tonight, the Idaho Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, we're a statewide group that first and foremost in our careers and our lives put children first. And we don't know how many children have died because, from this issue, because they don't come and seek medical help. I wish we could understand the scope of the problem in its entirety, and I'm grateful that we have this opportunity to discuss what we can do as a state to help these children.
So that's an interesting point that you make. There's no tracking system for it. Erwin, have you seen cases? Because I've heard some estimates that there's been as many as 12 children who have died just since 2011 for absence of medical care.
Well, I haven't heard that number. I know what was, what I've seen given over several years, there's about two a year. We're talking children. You know, the coroners, our aspect isn't just children in, in this aspect, all that's where the law is. But just to pass out a, a story that we have or that I dealt with, when I was called out to the house on the death of a mother. I, when I got there, the, there were about 30 people from the faith there in the house that had been praying, and they said the mother died during childbirth. And I asked if the child was, did the child make it? And they said, "No, the child died also." And I asked, "Where was the child?" And they said, "They're with the mother." I go into the, to the room, and examining the mother, the baby had crowned and got stuck in the birth canal. And the people prayed for the next four to five days while that baby rotted, and the mother became septic and died. So we're seeing things where even with, with adults and family members that are older that can say, make their own choices, are not getting medical care. And in some cases, they're wanting it, but because of the pressures from the church, they're not getting it. We had a case where a, a boy had died years ago from diabetes, and then we find out six, seven months later, his father went to a doctor to have treatment for something else. And I didn't find that out for like four years after the fact. But, you know, the cases we're seeing, I see the, the sad end of it. Sore throat turns into meningitis, the father carries the, the seven-year-old, eight-year-old girl around the house for four or five days until she died. And he said she was just burning up, and they're putting cold compacts on her. And I got to the house about an hour and a half after her death, and her temperature was 106. I mean, I look at those and they're hard, you know, being a man of faith, I sit and wonder how, how strong faith has to be to see that happen. But we all kind of have our own, how we look at different things, but I just, you know, my big, strong feeling is that children don't have a say and that we need to, we need to step up and, you know, protect the children. I mean, this isn't necessarily putting boundaries on their faith. Let's, let's put it where we can see what's, what's going on. There's a lot of other stuff happening out there. There's a lot of other stuff happening out there that doesn't lead up to death. And it, it's frustrating in our office when, when we're prosecuting one person for something and we can't get a prosecution on another person that's did something far worse. Uh, and, uh, we just feel we need to, you know, to at least give the prosecutors the right to choose. And those cases, those are just some of many cases this office has. And I, you know, I sit and wonder on a lot of those cases. And, uh, you know, of just, what do we do? I mean, is, you know, and I'm the first one to be supporting religious freedom. But, um, when you look at children with what's going on, uh, it'll, you know, if you just look out in, um, just say with your normal abuse cases that take place and everything. I mean, we're sent back saying that a lot of those are what you say are, are what we consider good families. But things happen, you know, and, uh, you know, and it's, it's a tough, it's a tough question. But, uh...
Janet has something she wants to add. And I want to remind you in the audience, um, this is the time. If you want to talk about a personal story, if you have a question for somebody on the panel, just sort of quietly come down here and we will, we will get you in. But Janet, you had something you wanted to add to what Erwin was talking about?
Actually, I think I'd like to hear from others.
Oh, okay. Do we have somebody? Would you like to share your story? Just go ahead and sit down, tell us who you are and, and what your role is here today.
My name is Brian Hoyt. I grew up here in Boise in Ada County, a member of the faith who I, from what I understand, we're not supposed to name of faith healers here, the followers of Christ.
Oh, we don't have any rule like that. If you would like to say.
Well, from what I understood, the way people were saying, we don't want to pick on or select.
We don't want any bashing, but you can certainly tell us your religion.
Well, growing up in the followers of faith, my heart aches for little Ms. Walton here. At the age of five, I held my first infant that took its last breath in my arms. Because I did not have enough faith in God to heal that baby through the prayer in my arms. The physical ailments I have suffered, I still carry with me today. Ms. Walton's can be seen. My bone issues cannot. The mental scars that are left with children are not being addressed here. It goes far beyond just a physical illness that happens. My poor fiancee Tiffany, the first night she stayed with me, I almost punched her because she crawled into bed. There are scratches in the concrete basement wall, what my bed butts up against, wherein my fright mares, I still dig into the concrete because of what I have experienced through faith healing. I have watched children in record 110-plus degree summers with legs broken in multiple places, with two-by-fours wrapped around them with bungee cord and rope tied to a center beam of a ceiling. And when the muscle is completely twisted and looks wrong, the elders come in and wrap a towel and put it between the child's teeth and re-break it and try to straighten that muscle out. All the while, it's 110, 113 degrees outside. There is no air conditioning in the house. And there is black Visqueen on the windows. This happened down in Garden City to my brother. I myself was sent home from school one day in seventh grade because I hurt my leg because I went out and tried out for wrestling. I was told that that was God's vengeance on me because I was dealing with people who were not of the faith. I was kept out of school until the school called and said I needed a doctor's permit. It was that time that they took me to a doctor, still wearing, two weeks later, the same clothes I was that day and stinking because they could not get them off through the swelling. When the doctor came in and started cutting up my pants, my mother went crazy calling him a pedophile because of their faith healing. This is incorrect. This is not about freedom of religion. This is about freedom from abuse and neglect, flat out. I don't care what faith your flavor is. That is abuse. Plain and simple. It is tantamount to divine ignorance.
What would you like to see happen here with the state?
I would like to see not one statute, as the milquetoast Bill Gannon introduced in 2014 directed at. It needs to go towards all four statutes. Any place where someone can say, in the name of God, this child has died and I cannot be prosecuted, needs removed. Now, if we were to change that, just one word in that, in the name of Allah, my child is dying because of my faith. In the name of Satan, my child is dying because of my belief in the divine Satan. There would be a different outcome. Your God does not dictate child abuse.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome, Jan.
I really appreciate your words. And I, I just feel it is crucially important to understand the emotional and psychological issues at here as well, as Brian has pointed out and, and Mariah has as well. Um, other states have looked at this and they have struggled with how are we going to try to preserve religious freedoms and also protect children? Time and time again, if there are religious exemptions there and there is absolutely no accountability for denying a child needed, talking necessary medical care. I'm not talking about going to a doctor because you have the sniffles. We're talking, in the state of Idaho, a parent is obligated, is obligated to deliver needed medical care to their child unless they fall into this exemption. In the state of Oregon, the last child of the followers of Christ who died was a baby who was born prematurely in 2009. That state fully repealed their exemptions in 2011. There has not been one child who has died in the followers of Christ in Oregon in the last seven years. Whereas in Idaho, in the last seven years, we've had about 12 children die. I, in reference to what was asked about the governor's letter, I am personally very concerned about the time. That what, what we are hearing about here is going on now. We're not saying these are bad people. We are just saying that the children need protection and the longer we wait, the more chi- children are going to suffer.
My heart aches for Ms. Watson. It, it pains me to see this stuff. I grew up in it. I, I have seen atrocities that people would not watch in a movie. I have had fevers of over 108. I have been beaten within this faith for not having enough faith to heal myself. I had two bones shattered in my left foot in seventh grade. That was my problem that I, that I ended up having to go to the doctor for. And that's why I was in the same clothes for two weeks when they finally took me in and the doctor cut my pants off. I was beaten within this faith for not having enough faith in God to allow him to heal me. And we're talking not just my stepdad. All of the elders of the church would come over and they anoint you with rancid olive oil because every wound gets rubbed with olive oil. Now, if that is a festering pustule that's infected, you take two fingers and you rub the olive oil. And that goes into that olive oil that sets at room temperature. If it is a broken bone, if it, if it is a small cut, that is shared. And then you all share off of the communal bottle of Manischewitz wine. Does not matter what illness you have. And then it goes right in that nice incubator called your refrigerator where it has plenty of sugar in it and sits there and that is shared. The, as sad as she is, the mental that comes along with watching your brothers and sisters, your aunts and uncles die for being told that the baby in your arms when you are five years old died because you did not have enough faith in God, that is abuse.
You know, maybe this would be a good time to get a little more perspective from Reverend Kukla because that's your faith experience. And we hear a lot about the followers of Christ. And Melissa, who was supposed to be here tonight, has spent some time with those people. And certainly, they mourn the death of their children. Your, your situation completely abusive. I think we can all agree on that. But, you know, some other people who let their children go through the sickness process and die, they're, they're sad. How is it that in some religions and theologically, they're all apparently looking at the same Bible? Some can come away with that we should leave it to God and prayer and faith. And some do not interpret it that way. How do you, you counsel on that?
If I could answer that question.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
I mean, you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. Um, it's a powerful story. Uh, I had written down right before you started speaking, I hate when faith becomes a weapon. And then you spoke about faith becoming a weapon. Uh, it, it's personally painful to me to watch the many ways we turn faith into a weapon to create spiritual abuse, emotional abuse, physical abuse. When I think at its root, faith spirituality is about love and building up one another. Um, unfortunately, we have a insidious ability to turn it into something else. I can't speak for all faith, obviously. Um, and how different people take the, the different texts. Some of us have different sacred texts. Some of us understand the authorities of those texts differently. I think that it's important to understand that Idaho sits at the forefront of a very challenging question about the freedom of religion across the spectrum. Whether we're talking about human rights or whether we're talking about, uh, faith healing and, and whatnot. And we have this fear, this slippery slope. Janet and I were speaking beforehand about slippery slopes. Somehow we think that releasing a single protection that probably should never have gotten in there in the first place is going to slide us all the way to the government telling us exactly how to raise our children. I have four children. I have to buckle them up in the car. I should, but I also legally have to do it. There are all sorts of ways in which we mandate the care of our children. And that's part of our government is, and it's a good function of our government. Um, and I hate to think that somehow faith gets you a get out of jail free card with regards to neglect and abuse. Something that can be so beautiful and wonderful turned putrid and horrible. And, and I can understand the human psyche's need for fundamentalism in any level. Somebody who will tell you they know the exact answers to life. How nice is it in an insidious, horrible way to be able to say, I know exactly why that baby died. I know exactly what's good and what's bad and what's evil. We live in a much more ambiguous world than that. But there's an attractiveness to somebody who will tell you they know all the answers. So it's hard for me to want to impugn the character and personality of a person of faith, even when I don't understand their faith. And I think that's the place where legal protections are required to help those who cannot advocate for themselves.
What were conversations like in your family? Did you say it was your, your mother didn't necessarily believe in conventional medical treatments and maybe your father did? Was there conflict and conversation in your household about it?
No, not, not at the, I'm the third of four children. So by the time I remember life.
Yeah, they just picked up the pacifier and put it back in, right?
Yeah, right, right. We, we'd gone, we'd gone through that learning curve. And, and I want to be respectful for what stories are my right to share and what are not. I know that, um, I think she would be fair for me to say that as, on where she is now, she doesn't quite understand and get where she once was. But that, that's her journey and I, you know, I think it's hard. I, I try to talk to folk who are in, who still live in that world. And, and they are good, wonderful, caring people in so many different ways. And then we disagree very strongly on that subject. That's not the only subject in which I find that's the case, but, but that is one. And I think that for them, you know, I mean, to get told by everyone in your world, this is how systemic sin exists. You get told by everyone in your world that this is what's true. And you grow up believing it's true that to be a person of faith, you have to trust. You have to trust your faith to be able to heal. And that God is that powerful and God is able to do that. And that anything less than that is not trusting God. Um, and if your whole world tells you that's true, then you grew up thinking it's true in the fiber of your being. And it takes gentle hands to, to shift that worldview. So it's a different thing about how we can talk about this with adults versus how we can talk about when we're protecting children.
And that was my final, on, on that, I do concur with you. Freedom of religion does not negate freedom from religion.
Thank you. I'd really like to open it up. I'm sure this has some of you thinking. Do you have something to contribute?
I do. I actually have a question.
Great. Go ahead and identify yourself.
My name is Jake Ellis. I'm a retired firefighter, firefighter from the city of Boise. I retired after 27 years. And through those years, we responded on all kinds of calls, all kinds of different things. We were trained in recognizing child abuse and neglect. And we had a responsibility to report it, except sometimes. That's the challenge is sometimes. So that was really hard calls for us is that we had the capability, we had the resources, we are there to help, but we weren't allowed to. And then we were stuck. The question I had is, the last call I had was, was a seven-year-old fell off a big inflatable slide. He had an angulated fracture in his right arm, landed on pavement. And he cried for an hour and a half while we were waiting because we couldn't do anything. But at the time, the congregation was split at this event. Some of the congregation were very angry that we weren't doing something. The other half were understood and were not letting us do something. The thing that came across, and it was rumored, somebody said that, um, and this goes down to the number, my question, is that, um, when you say there was 12 reported, it was reported to us, um, apparently, that this mother actually has six children buried in the yard. And that's the question is, is unreported deaths? If they're infants and not of a school age where they would be missed in the community and if they're protected by the church, is there a possibility that our numbers are skewed?
I think there's a great possibility. And Erwin would probably know about that because I'm curious on a call like that, do you write in your report, no treatment given, religious exemption? Do, are there records?
Um, there is. And in this, in this case, it was actually an hour and a half. The, the lawyers for the hospital met with the prosecutor attorney. They came up with agreement that this falls within Idaho guidelines that either we treat or the mother will be held for neglect. And so they took it off us. We transported to the hospital and carried on care. But it took about an hour and a half to go through all that wrangling to... Um, but it took about an hour and a half to go through all that wrangling to work around this exemption. Um, all the time while we're sitting and listening to a seven-year-old with a broken arm.
And what about on, on the coroner's side, when there's a death, is there no classification given as to whether it was a preventable death? You just report cause of death only? Other circumstances? Is any of that put on record?
By law, if, if our findings show something has taken place criminally or we feel something has been, we're to see that it's turned over to the prosecutor. That's by law. So if we've, it's, the coroner has to turn it over for further investigation if we see it. So, yeah, if we see anything, it, it, it's turned over. I mean, we call them up, say, "This is what it is" and you're saying it's this religious group and they're going, "Okay." And, um, and, and I can tell you with a lot, we, we did autopsies for 18 counties in Idaho. And, uh, from the different counties, when they'd come in, the prosecutors all are very upset over the fact that they can't do anything in, when you're sitting around seeing a child die from a ruptured appendix. And, uh, it just goes on and they, you know, and die from peritonitis. I mean, it's, but they can't do anything about it. So, you know, it, it's frustrating, but that's just the way it is. And, and you know, when it comes to what we don't know, I mean, we, we don't know. I know if some, if we got strong evidence that a body's buried, I mean, we'd go out and try to find, try to see what, we'd try to find it. But that's never, that's never come up to my, while I was in office as far as bodies being buried of children. You know, all the ones we, we end up getting have been homicides and stuff for years, so.
And, and then certainly in this case, it, it wasn't something that I could really follow up on actual because it was rumor and I had half the congregation that were angry. Um, and the other half that were standing in the way and making sure that the mother's rights were being followed. Um, so, um, I, uh, I, I don't think in this case there was any follow-up in that report. But that was a concern is when I looked at the number, I'm like, I don't know how many there could be.
And that, the tw- the, the 12 number is, is just a guess? But it's all, it's good to know that it's on reports. It would be tedious, but there would be some way to develop a scope of the, of the numbers, it seems like.
Well, I don't know. What, what was the timeframe of the 12?
Since 2011 is what I got.
2011. Not through my, not through Ada County. That I, I think it'd be 12. It might be near that. But like I said, we usually average about two a year. But we're talking throughout the, you know, the whole area throughout the state. So, you know, that, I mean, Ada County may have had three and.
In an organization.
Five years is 10, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's.
There, there is an organization that does try to track these cases. It's Children's Healthcare's Illegal Duty or Child. And I'm forget, it's idahochildren.org, I believe, is one of their webpages. Um, but you can also look from, from our webpages, Project Idaho. Um, there, there's a link that can take you to a page that shows, um, various coroner's reports of, of, about a dozen children. So, I mean, it's sort of being just tracked from afar, but not in any official way.
And on, on the medical side, that's all protected unless it's handed over for prosecution. Isn't that correct, Doctor?
Correct. So if we do treat a child for any reason, we're not allowed to disclose that information uh, except to a legal guardian or to someone that the legal guardian gives us permission to release it to. In case of a child death, then we can release that information to the coroner um, because then they would have jurisdiction. But I, I think, uh, Mr. Ellison, is that your name? Or did I say it wrong? Mr. Ellis?
Jake.
I'm sorry. I think you brought up really two, you brought up really two good points. One, we really don't know what the numbers are. We can estimate, but we know that in one cemetery, Peaceful Valley Cemetery, in a 10-year period, the death rate of children buried in that cemetery was 10 times greater than the rest of Idaho. So we do know that there is a much higher rate.
What is Peaceful Valley? Tell us about that. Is it a specific place where a church buries? What, what is that?
Well, as I understand, Peaceful Valley Cemetery is a cemetery where many, uh, members of the followers of Christ, uh, you know, are buried. And my understanding is that, uh, someone took a look at all the headstones or the records of those that were buried there. And in a 10-year period, the rate of child deaths in that cemetery was 10 times greater than on average uh, statewide. So that, you know, only gives us an idea, but we just don't know the real numbers. But the second thing I, you bring up, there is a lot of confusion about how this law is understood and interpreted. Uh, I was asked to help evaluate a child who had a chronic disease. And that chronic disease is something that a child could live with if they receive proper medical treatment. Well, the family of this child did not belong to any religion that relied on faith healing only. But they had very strong personal beliefs about the specifics of different medications. And in this particular instance, one of the parents felt that the medications were causing side effects. And so they stopped the medication and the child got worse. Well, the mo- the caregiver kept saying, "It's the medication that's causing the side effects." And what we responded, "No, it's the untreated medical condition." Well, this case was eventually reported. And the person investigating the case initially told me that a parent has a right, a religious right to determine how their child is treated. Essentially saying they have a religious right to what medications the child should have. And it isn't necessarily up just to the medical professionals. And I thought about that for a moment. And it, I, I realized that that individual in the state responsible for investigating child neglect had confusion herself about what the law meant. So that is another piece about this law that we have in Idaho that makes it even more difficult to provide the care and make sure children get treated when those that evaluate or investigate these cases don't understand what the limitations, what exactly it means. And so there could be more children suffering because of misunderstanding of this law and its application.
And, and your conversation there sort of reminds me about immunizations because that specific treatment can be denied for religious, e- essentially you're telling your doctor, "I don't want my child to have immunizations because I think they're harmful or I have a religious, uh, you know, being against it." I mean, that, it all kind of goes.
So, yes, I, parents have a right to decide on immunizations. And my bias as a pediatrician is that I believe children should be immunized. But what I want to make clear is that what we're proposing with this change in the law is not a way to coerce parents into giving their children immunizations. It's not a means to force parents to take their child to the doctor for a runny nose or something minor. It really is very limited in scope. And if the child is going to experience severe permanent disability or death, that is when all parents need to seek medical help for their child.
I'm just curious, is there any, anybody in the room that, uh, has personal experience or comes down on the other side of this issue? We've had a lot of people testify to the effects of it, but are there any um, religious believers who think it's best left in the, in the hands of God or through prayer? That you feel brave enough to come up and tell us your side of this story? Anybody? All right. Well, we just want to make sure to know that the welcome mat is out and we'd be interested in hearing your side. Do you have something to say?
Okay, good.
Tell us your name.
Uh, my name's April Hoy. I'm a resident of Boise, Idaho. And I just had a few comments to make on a different statute, uh, that pertains to child abuse, but one whose history I feel is instructive, uh, related to this issue. Um, anyone who's had occasion to look through Idaho Code that relates to child abuse and neglect may have come across an unusual statute, Idaho Code, uh, 18 fif- or 181506A, uh, titled Ritualized Abuse of a Child. It's a very strange statute that contains, uh, passages prohibiting such strangely specific activities as involving children in animal sacrifice, drug use, or mutilating human bodies. Um, the history of the statute is very interesting. Back in the late 80s and early 90s, there was a widespread conspiracy theory that held that, um, Satanists across the US were kidnapping children and coercing women into giving birth to children so that they could be sacrificed to the devil. No evidence, no convincing evidence for this conspiracy theory was ever presented, but it was an idea that existed in the popular culture. Um, it gained such attraction in the, or, in the general mind that in the, in 1990, the Idaho State Legislature took up the issue and passed a law attempting to prohibit Satanists from engaging in this ritualized torture and abuse of children. Even in the complete absence of any such ritual torture or abuse actually happening. This bill passed unanimously through both, or through the committee, or through the House and Senate committees and passed by very large margins in both chambers. At the time, there was no wringing of hands over whether this violated anyone's religious liberty or whether it singled out the imagined Satanists in any sort of unfair manner. No one raised the issue of whether this was in some way violating the parental rights of the imagined Satanists. People believed, most likely mistakenly, but believed that children were being grievously harmed. And the legislature tried to do something about it. I, if we can muster that much action and political decision to stop a problem that was never occurring, I really hope that we can do something for this very real problem right here in front of us.
That was called the Satanic Panic.
Satanic Panic.
It was a nationwide scare that put some innocent people in prison.
All right.
I just might state, back at that time, there were numerous schools across the country that law enforcement was going to just because of that fact. And I had gone to several of them and they brought up all those issues, but, uh, I have, I have to agree with her at that one point. They never had one case that involved a child. They just said it was happening. But, um, it's, you know, but it was a, it went, it was quite rampant throughout the United States uh, for training going on within law enforcement on that.
All right. Well, we're coming past an hour now, so I thank you for attending and listening and being a great audience. I hope that, um, I know it was kind of gut-wrenching for me. I don't know if I was ready for what I heard here today. But Emily, you have a few final thoughts that you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, um, so, you know, I, I was reading through this article about, um, what, what Governor Otter said today at the AP Legislative Review. Um, and, you know, I, I was reading about what he was talking about with our, our amendments into our constitution and how much we need to respect the constitution. And especially people's freedom of religion, their freedom of speech, et cetera. And, you know, the thing that occurred to me is if you're dead, you cannot enjoy your constitutional freedoms. And to me, that's really what the issue comes down to. So truly above all of these freedoms that anyone has, if we can't keep someone alive to enjoy them, I think that's truly, that's the thing that's going on that's wrong here. And so, um, I would say, you know, even if it's not, we do talk about life, liberty, you know, in the constitution, but I would say above every amendment and freedom is truly this freedom to stay alive. And, um, I hope as we go out and we talk about this issue and our communities remember that that is truly the ultimate freedom is to be able to stay alive, to enjoy all the others. Um, and that's, that's just something that I care deeply about, that we, you know, think about children's lives and not just, "Well, we've got this freedom of religion thing, so we're gonna just let everything else go." So.
A child's right to life.
Well, you know, my, my last statement on this is that we're not trying to interfere with God healing the child. We're just trying to get that child medical treatment. That has nothing to do with God's choice of healing the child or not.
All right. Well, with that, thank you for coming and thank you to all the panel members for sharing your, uh, intelligence and, uh, your experience about this. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.